...to order, this meeting is called to order. I'd first like to welcome all of you, this is a really great evening for all of us. If any of you feel the need to sit down, there are a few seats here. We also have an overflow room out in the back that has the TV and will show you everything that's on there too. If not, we'd be more than happy to have you all in here. So if you feel you need a seat and you need to go into the overflow room, it's back there. Steve, do you have anything to report from our closed session?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The City Council is in closed session this evening on four separate matters, two pieces of existing litigation, and two anticipated matters, and there's no action to report.
Thank you very much. Can we have a roll call, please, Liz? Councilor Singleton, Kane, President Campion, Cruz, Powers?
Here.
We're going to have one minute silent prayer. Please remember, everyone overseas and our men and women who are here serving our country, our firefighters and our police officers, and at the end of that, I would like our police captain, uh, police chief to please say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hey, I didn't call you firemen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, unregapped and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. Could you please read the video statement, Liz?
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable fourteen, the Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast and Shore West Cable Systems. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel fourteen and will also be webcast at www.saxmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at nine AM. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at A DVD copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Thank you, Liz. Council, is there any additions, agenda approval additions and or deletions? I'm going to do one thing, I'm going to change the presentations, we're going to do the retirement of the police dogs first, and then we're going to do the swearing in of the police department.
And Madam Mayor, I actually have a committee appointment that I would like to move up after consent calendar.
Got it. Okay, we're going to have the two police dogs please come up, and the chief is going to say something, I like to say a little something before and after because I like to talk all the time. We really want to recognize and thank these two dogs for all of their hard work and service to our community. They're both retiring on sad occasions, one at the loss of Officer Kevin Ton and the other one because of an injury. It's not usually the way we retire them, but we wanted to let them know that we, the City of Galt and the City of Council really appreciates everything that they've done and their service.
Welcome tonight, we appreciate you being here. The gentleman in the uniform is Jared Ton and the dog with him is Yaro. And with Bo is Julie Rosner from the K-9, uh, Foothill K-9 Association, which we're a member of. Baldwin, excuse me. I got you mixed up. See. Anyway, we're here tonight to retire these dogs after quite length of service. Uh, Bo's been with us for quite some time, Yaro was here with us approximately about a year. So we're going to, in fact, award a certificate as far as re- uh, retirement to the, both animals.
Okay, I'm just going to read what the certificate says, and the chief and I are going to present them to the dogs. In recognition of your retirement from the Galt Police K-9 unit, the Galt City Council would like to recognize your value, your unending loyalty, and the vital contribution to law enforcement you brought to the community. As a K-9 partner, you are a guide, a protector, and a light in the ever-increasing violent world that law enforcement must deal with. Awarded on the seventh day of August two thousand and thirteen on behalf of the Galt City Council.
Before we move on, I'd like to tell you how this all came about. The mayor approached me and wanted to say, you know, what do we do with the dogs when they're retired? Well, basically, they retire off and we never see them again. Obviously, I've been in this business now for a long time and I've seen a lot of dogs go, and it was her idea as far as to, in fact, do this today, and I applaud you for it.
I have to thank one other person, I have to thank Paige, because her and I were talking about it together, Paige up in the front, our lovely photographer. We both worked on getting them here and we're very glad that we could get them both here together.
Great. Now it's my pleasure and honor to introduce new members to our apartment, uh, to our department that are in fact going to be sworn in. In front of you tonight, directly in front of me, is Lieutenant Brian Kalanowski. Next to him is Officer Jeff Weaver. Next to him is Officer Lee Benson. Next to him is Officer Brian Azvedo. And next to him is CSO Dispatcher, uh, Rose Brodecker. And then next to them is Handler Meyer Dick and his dog, who is Hunter Meyer Dick now. And Nathan has had this dog and we've just been certified, I think, now approximately a week, correct? Approximately.
Okay, if you would all raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies foreign and domestic that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion and during such time that I am an employee with the City of Galt I will faithfully discharge the duties of the posi- of my position according to the best of my abilities. Congratulations, Paul.
Now, as you noticed, they're badgeless, so I know there's members of family that would like to come up and pin their badges on them. You can come forward now, please. This is always the scary part, there's a big long pin that they pin on there. We always try not to draw blood. Thank you very much. Does anybody have anything they would like to say?
I'd like to shake their hands.
Okay. I give you the newest members for the Galt Police Department.
We're happy to have all of you. Now we're going to have Community of Character, oh, one more thing?
In the side room over there, if you want to go meet the newest members of Galt Police Department, you can exit now, and they'll be straight over to the side, uh, there's a doorway, and they'll be waiting for you there.
You know how to clear a room, don't you? I guess we're going to take a five-minute break till the rest of the That's what Liz said, go out and
I didn't mean to clear the room.
I guess we'll wait and do it later.
They're going to go meet everybody and we're going to take a five-minute break, but nobody's leaving, so I think we just move forward.
I will. Now we're, we are going to sue, are you ready, or Barbara, you're going to do it? The, um, Community of Character Respect? All right, then, so we do we'll do the SOAR presentation, okay?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to introduce Monica Lopez, Recreation Supervisor for the Galt Parks Rec Department. She'll be performing the presentation.
Thank you. So our presentation tonight is on the SOAR program. We actually, it's an after-school program, and this summer, we actually have a ten-week program that's occurring as well. The SOAR name is appropriate for both of our afters- both our after-school program and our summer programs. This will be our second year of offering the after-school program. The SOAR purpose, bridge of the time from when school ends until parents are able to pick the kids up, provide students supervised activities, homework, study groups, arts and crafts, and physical activities. There are several benefits related to children attending after-school programs. Keeping kids out of trouble is the number-one benefit. Number two, kids can practice and improve on what they are learning throughout the day in their classes. And number three is exercise. We have three SOAR locations within the Galt Elementary School Districts, Lake Canyon, Meranga Ranch, and River Oaks Elementary. Children do not have to attend that school in order to attend that after-school program. SOAR hours of operation, SOAR is offered every day that school is regularly in session. Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays are two-thirty to six, and Wednesdays are one to six. And then minimum days, SOAR will begin as soon as school is out. Typically, that's one o'clock, but we do have a week in November when school is out at twelve-thirty.
Let me, let me just make a point. Mention the three sites that we operate. Uh, there are, all the other elementary school district sites also have an after-school program called ACES that they've had for a number of years. We also participate in, um, so we now have, is that coming up? Oh, okay. Jumping again.
The SOAR staffing and cost. We have a sports coordinator who supervises the three, helps supervise the three program sites. There are a minimum of two staff members at each site, and we aim to have a one staff member to twenty student ratio. Currently, the price is one hundred and fifty dollars, fifteen dollars per month per child. If you want to attend, you pay for that month. You attend as little or as often as you'd like. With the SOAR program, you can come for fifteen minutes, or you can come for the entire three and a half hours, um, or six hours on Wednes- or five hours on Wednesdays, whereas with the, the ACES program, which is at the other three school sites within the Galt Elementary School District, you have to attend every day, and you have to attend the bulk of the time every day in order to remain in the program. If you aren't attending regularly with that because of the grant that's funding them, you may lose your spot to someone on the waiting list. SOAR daily activities, this is a guideline that our site supervisors try to follow. Things that may change, that could be, um, maybe it's really nice weather outside, so they're spending more time outside, maybe it's more inclement weather, so they're not doing anything outside. Some arts and crafts activities are more in-depth, depending on the holiday or what theme each site chooses to pick for that week. They are given a, a list or a guide of what kind of activities they can do, and they cater it to that school site. You know, maybe they have more older kids, more younger kids, more boys than girls, et cetera. This year, because of parent requests, we put together a summer SOAR program. It is June tenth through next Friday, August sixteenth. The school district decided to have it at River Oaks Elementary School. It is open, was open, is open to all students entering in to first through sixth grades for this upcoming school year, um, and this is a pay-by-week. So again, you pay for the week that you want to come, you come as often or as little as you want, and it is open seven AM to six PM. So here's an example of the, the weekly calendar, the monthly calendar that we were using for the summer SOAR program. You'll notice on Sunday, it lists the theme of the week, and each day, different activities are being offered at the site, or, um, you know, the Olympics week, they did different activities outdoors. The last day, they were able to dress up. Um, this is something that all of my, most of my SOAR supervisors are actually working at the summer SOAR program, and they just really ran with this and had a lot of fun with the different activities that they could do. The SOAR program for summer offers two snacks per day, and then each child is required to bring their own lunch. For summer SOAR, we were able to do some field trips. Here is a picture of our group at the local fire station. We have Super Heroes Week, and that is where they made, um, the lightsabers with, actually, the water noodles and masking tape or duct tape on the ends, and their capes are pillowcases. And here, we have this, this Zoo Safari Week. They have a bulletin board at River Oaks, um, which works out really well, that throughout the year, depending on what they're working on, that's what they put up on the board, and, um, River Oaks lets them have that wall just for their activities. And that is SOAR program. Are there any questions?
How many, how many students did you have throughout the summer, this curious?
The, it varied, we, seven, seven to twelve, it was about the average. Our lowest week, I think, was, um, the Fourth of July week. Um, and twelve seems to be our norm, it's the higher end of it, but twelve.
Are they repeating, they're repeating students, or are they new students each week, or?
Most of them are repeating. If you'll see some of the pictures, I don't know, like, bottom right-hand corner is Ms. Mollson, she's been there almost every single week.
Okay.
Um, but, but for the, probably the main seven have been there the whole summer, other than a week here and there.
Looks like a great program.
It is a great program.
It's a good program, we just need to get the word out there. And like I said, most of my supervisors are taking turns working at this one, and they're just having a blast, so I know they're going to use a lot of the activities for, um, the summer SOAR program, or school SOAR program.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, that was a good presentation, and I agree with Barbara in her, it's a really good program. Okay, so now we are going to go on to the Community of Character Respect, and Barbara, we're going to There's Paige. Good evening, and thank you again for having us here. I, I, uh, thought I was going to have to wade through all these, these uniforms and dogs to get up here tonight, so I'm glad you went ahead. I was talking to Officer Benson's significant other, or friend, I guess, and I told her, I think I've lived in Galt a good part of my life, and I used to know all the officers, uh, the, in the, you know, on the, uh, forest here, and most of them, and the reason I knew them, before you begin to jump to conclusions, is that most of them had been my students at one time or another. And I used to tell them, you can't give your teacher a ticket if you pull her over. And of course, they never, they never agreed to not do that, but anyway, I know I can't say that to these new fellows because I don't know who they are. But anyway, uh, we're here tonight, Barbara and I, to represent the Galt Community of Character Coalition, and as you know, we, uh, we have six character traits that we celebrate during the year. I was kind of thinking on the way in tonight that maybe we should repull the community and see if we want to keep, keep going on these six, but tonight, uh, we're celebrating the character trait of respect. And we have a very distinguished person who has received that, uh, recognition tonight, and I'd like to invite David Herberger up, along with Winona Cassidy, who nominated David. And as, as, as most of you know, David is our publisher of our local newspaper and a few others in the area. So without further ado, I'm going to turn this over to Barbara.
David and Winona? David Herberger is a true model of respect for the Galt area community and region. David is one who truly lives his life by the golden rule, treating others as he would want, want to be treated. As editor of the Galt Herald, this message of respect is seen in how he portrays the lives and activ- activities of those in our community. David also demonstrates respect for others in all the many community organizations and volunteer activities he serves in. He continuously demonstr- demonstrates positive interactions with others and gives credit to others for their contributions to team efforts. He demonstrates respect even for those with whom he may disagree. He demonstrates that when we act with respect and honesty towards others, we ensure that our mutual needs for dignity and respect are honored. By his example, David Herberger sets the tone for dignity and respect in our community. David Herberger is a true model of respect, and this was, um, nomination was by Winona Cassidy.
I don't treat Barbara with respect, I make fun of her accent, every opportunity I do, every ti- every opportunity I get. Uh, Character Coalition is what makes, uh, one of the things that makes Galt a wonderful place and probably the best kept secret in, in California, is a place to live. It's all about community, and, uh, if the Character Coalition would do an award for leadership, I think that Sue and Mary and the rest of the organization would fall into that, because your, your efforts to make this a better place, and so have luck. Thanks for letting me come up. That works great.
I just wanted to add some congratulations to you, David. Um, I think you are an asset to our community, and I know that whenever anyone asks for anything to be done or help with anything, you step right up to the plate. You're a good steward of the City of Galt. Okay, and Liz, you said we were going to do a committee appointment?
I'm sure we can do that. Tonight, I'm asking Council to make an appointment to fill a vacancy on the Measure R Committee. There is one opening with a term ending April two thousand and fourteen. We did receive a letter of interest from Ralph Cortez. Ralph, you want to stand up? Just introduce yourself. There's Mr. Cortez.
Hi, Mr. Cortez.
I know firsthand, he's visited a few of our committees and found the right one with Measure R, so it's, tonight I ask for, um, approval by the entire City Council. It's not an individual appointment, it's a, it's an appointment by the entire City Council. I ask for your approval to appoint Mr. Cortez to the Measure R Committee.
So move.
Wait, we're not done with you yet.
Okay, I, Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Councilwoman Campion?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye. Would you like to come and just say a little something about yourself? And welcome, you've just been put on the committee.
Thank you, I am a little nervous myself, but, uh, it's been quite a few years since I've been involved in the politics side and the getting out and visiting the people and stuff. Most of my experience was in racing politics for many years, uh, and that, uh, that was challenging itself, being on a national organization and then a local organization. But, uh, I do, uh, enjoy the interaction with people, um, and as I think some of you know, I'm fairly new to the, to the city. We bought a house here in, uh, January, and, uh, it's, it's looking like this is going to be a final resting ground for me, um, and I just fell in love with the city, and I, I, I love the interaction, uh, getting out. Uh, the, uh, National Night Out last night was, was awesome, uh, we had a tremendous amount of people, I didn't really even expect to see that many, but it was great, and I saw a lot of council members out there, and, um, I just, uh, look to, look forward to being actively involved and learning a lot more about the city and
Well, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Okay, Liz, public comment, please.
Public Government Code, Section five-four-nine-five-four-point-three, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council, and limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk. And I have no speaker sheets tonight.
Okay. So, uh, could you read what's on the information and consent calendar, please?
Tonight, we have five items. Number one, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of July sixteenth, two thousand and thirteen. Number two, approval of the City of Galt warrants. Number three, foreclosure proceedings for communities, Community Facilities Districts nineteen eighty-eight dash one. Number four, foreclosure proceedings for nineteen ninety-nine dash one reassessment districts. And number five, approval of the Injury and Illness Prevention Program.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Call for the vote, please, Liz.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember, Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Councilwoman Campion?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye. See, moving along now, just in time for discretionary funds. Vice Mayor Singleton?
I'm sorry, I just rushed back down from a, a Lasco meeting up in Sacramento, so I need to take my apologies for being tardy. Uh, yes, I'd like to, uh, use, uh, two hundred and fifty dollars of my discretionary funds for the, uh, the, the Galt Senior Club and their forty-fourth luncheon, uh, which will be on, uh, August the nineteenth of this month, uh, and they need to have some help to buy some food and stuff, and then hopefully, and, and also council will be there to support them, I'm sure, so if council will so approve- So if council will so approve, I'd sure appreciate it.
Do I have a motion?
They would too.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So move. I got a motion.
Okay, call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Counselor Payne?
Aye.
Counselor Campion?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel.
Now on to the treasurer's office. Shaun, the treasurer's report for period ending June 2013.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Before I start with the treasurer's report, I just, I just wanna say thank you very much for acknowledging, when you started the meeting, acknowledging our servicemen and women from this community and, and, and in particular, who is overseas. That, I'll say hit home, hits home to me, because I have a, a son, Matthew, who is a private first class in the US Army. He's stationed in Anzbach, Germany. He's a petroleum supply specialist, which basically means he's a gas man.
What again?
Gas man.
Yeah.
He, he fills up Apache helicopters, I guess, when they come in with, with jet fuel or whatever they put in. So anyway, I just wanna say thank you very much and I'm very proud of him for serving our country.
I'll make sure you thank him for our first service.
I will, thank you. Now for the treasurer's report, ending June of 2013. The California, State of California LEF funds, the, the yield for, for that was the lowest point since its inception, which was January of 1977. The yield for that is, was .24, so a little bit less than a quarter of a percent per year. Now, it, that's, that's the bad news, okay? Well, wait a minute, I got one more piece. Hold on, I'll get it all done right in the very beginning. Once a year, I always come before the council and always declare how much interest that the city earned during the past fiscal year. This past fiscal year was $246,166.61. Now, I will say, in the good years, that, that amount was a little bit over $2 million. So in comparison, it's about one tenth of that. And, you know, we all know why, interest rates are down, and it's, it's the economy as, as of, as of right now. Now, that's, that's, I will focus on the positive. During the month of June, we had two callable agencies that were, were in fact called. They, they had a rate of .625 and .5, okay? So when I took that money and reinvested, we, the bond prices had gone up, and so I was able to reinvest, and these are step ups, which I'll explain that in a minute. But, but the initial interest rate was 1% and 1.5%. So that is positive, it's a positive trend that I see, that rates are slightly moving up. Now, all of our callable agencies that we have, which account for approximately 50% of our whole portfolio, they're all what are called step ups. A step up is that, say it's a five-year bond, ev, on an annual basis, the rate will actually step up to another level, okay? And those, that's, that's all I buy at this point, because I know, I know at some point rates will increase. Now, of course, that agency, whether it be the Federal Home Loan Bank or Fannie Mae, they do always have different callable dates. So yes, they could call it, but also, they'll, they'll continue to step up. So I'm trying to, as rates rise, hopefully, you know, I know that in fact our bonds will rise too, that we have in our portfolio. I'll answer any questions that you have, but that's, that's really all I have to report for June of 2013.
Any questions, counsel?
What's the LEF rate out right now, Shaun?
It's, it's, it's still .24. It's still .24, yes, yes. The, the rate there does not move very quickly. It usually lags about 60 days behind, like say if a rise or a drop. And so even though rates have risen a little bit, LEF will lag those 60 days, but then you're gonna start seeing it rise. This .24, and I'm definitely predicting that, that this is, this is the lowest it's gonna go. You know, I don't, truly, I don't see it going any lower. And well, see, they, they have to also maintain a shorter duration. And so that, that's why it is, it is as low as it is.
How short is short?
Thirty days. Sounds like 30 days on the LEF rate.
Well, we have the ability to pull money out of LEF on a daily basis. So we have one day liquidity. Now, LEF's entire portfolio duration is, I'd have to look, is about 145 days.
Oh.
Okay? So they, they buy different bonds, and, you know, some very short and some a little bit longer. But they, they definitely don't go out that far, because they have to maintain that liquidity to their agencies, including us. That one day liquidity. Okay, I ask for the council approval of the treasurer's report of June 2013.
So move.
Do I have a second? Second. Call for the vote, please, Liz.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Counselor Payne?
Aye.
Counselor Campion?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Now on to the investment policy of 2013 and 14.
Yes, thank you very much. The investment policy before you tonight is the same investment policy that was presented to you three months ago, which, which you approved with one minor addition. If you can look on page 14, I have added one approved broker. The firm is Cantor Fitzgerald and Company, the broker is Bruce Patterson. And to give you a little background, as far as why I had to come, come back to you with this tonight. Three months ago, Bruce Patterson was, I'll say, in between positions, or in between firms. And I was not able, I didn't know where he was going to land, so that's why I'm bringing it back to you tonight. He has been on our approved broker list for approximately 10 years at this point with the firm of First Tennessee Bank. He, he then, in that time period, he then landed a, a new position. Now, as I said, he's with Cantor Fitzgerald. And I just simply wanted to re-add him to our approved broker list. Very, very minor change, but it needed to have council approval. So with that, I ask for your approval just to add him as one of my approved brokers. I plan to use him for, to purchase callable agencies and non-local CDs.
Okay, do I have other motions?
Will you approve?
I'm sorry, was there any discussion? No? Okay. Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Counselor Payne?
Aye.
Counselor Campion?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
And thank you so much, nice to see you again.
Yes.
Uh, now we're on to the city manager's office, and it's the Public Education and Government Funding, PEG, and that's you, Matt, or you?
Yep.
Here you are.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. As you know, the public education grant, you know, funds various projects for cities and education governmental agencies for broadcast over the local television channel 14 in the Sacramento area. As in the past, we've submitted applications for funding for doing things. And, you know, of course, right now, you've seen the changes we've got here in the council chambers. Once again, for the fiscal year 13, 14, we submitted another request covering projection and lighting systems for the room in, in the amount of $155,710. They approved that. And there's really not a whole lot for this, so I'm gonna keep this short. We're asking for your approval to accept those funds, so that we can get on the, underway with our projects.
Yay, we love free money. Could you please read the recommended action, please, Liz?
Yes. Adopt a resolution accepting the public education and government funding in the amount of $155,710 from the Sacramento Metropolitan Cable Television Commission for infrastructure improvements to the city's cable broadcast and appropriate the project funding. That was appropriate, not appropriate.
Any more discussion, counsel? Can I have a motion?
So move.
Okay, call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Counselor Payne?
Aye.
Counselor Campion?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Now, Certificate of Final Environmental Impact Report and Adoption of Wastewater Treatment Plant Facilities Master Plan, Public Works Department. It's Steve and Sandy. Who's speaking?
Well, I'll kick it off, and I'll ask Mark Clarkson to come on forward. He and Sandy are gonna give you a brief presentation. Just wanted to make a, a brief introductory remark, and that is, tonight's an important step on what has been an 18-month journey, started on my predecessor's watch to try to find a way to meet compliance of some upcoming regulatory requirements at our wastewater treatment plant. And we wanted to do it in an orderly manner, and Mark will talk more about that. But tonight's action is a follow-up to the presentation that was made at a council study session in June. And we know there's some heavy lifting here tonight, so we want to help prepare you for that. So with that, Mark, if you'd give us a brief overview, and I think Sandy's gonna chime in on the EIR side of the equation.
Mayor, counsel. It's, it's great to see the officers here tonight.
Yeah.
God bless every one of them and their families. Okay. We're gonna make this, we've had it, we've had a few sessions with you, or a few times that we went through some of this. And some of it's drawn out, but the cake is running low, so we're gonna get moving on this pretty quick. And, um, we've got the master plan in front of you, the final. We've got the EIR documents and all the mitigation of, connected with that. Okay, here we go, here we go. Just a, a quick overview of what the purpose and the scope of the facilities master plan was. We go through everything from capacity to evaluating the existing system, providing a, a foundation for the rate study. A few things in there, a couple of things that I do wanna, that aren't listed there, is that we really wanna keep this plan able to be flexible enough for whatever needs that we have in the future and unknown regulatory issues that can come up. Your finger works better than this. We had a lot of reasons for this master plan to start. Besides looking at the system itself with respect to the regulatory issues, we also had aging infrastructure. We had, we wanted to make sure that we can maintain the 3 MGD design capacity out there. We had to look at the timing of all the improvements and everything connected with this. And this, this taken back in, in February 2012, you approved a, a contract, design contract and master task order agreement with West Yost, who, Dave Anderson is in the audience here with West Yost. And, and we took about, it took about a year to develop all the task orders, all the environmental information, all of the documents, to help put this plan together. And, and a draft was developed back in February next. This finger's working good, too. The selected alternatives, you know, we're basically using the type of system that we have out there. We're expanding a little bit. It's the most cost-effective that we have at this point. It does help us do some future improvements to go to 4.5 MGD and 6 MGD, pretty, pretty routine in that process. Here we go, next one. The yellow that you see there is pretty much all the regulatory issues that we have to do at the treatment plant. We have to modify some existing systems, maybe the laser works. We'll see. Hey. The, these are existing right in here, these facilities, and these will be modified for the, for the new system that we're gonna have, and that's all the yellow. So we're gonna add a few new, uh, systems to the processes. We're gonna do some modifications to some existing facilities that we have because of their age. And we're going to...
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
As far as you say modify, to what extent are you gonna modify those existing systems?
Right now, these systems right now...
Yeah.
Have two controls on, on some motors that give air to the system. And I'll just give you an example. High or medium speed, that's it. Or off, three controls. That's about it. There's nothing that, our, our flow goes like this, you know, people use more in the day, it goes less at night.
Okay.
You know, but our pumps just run steady, constantly. So we have to, what we're gonna do on modifying it is make it to where the pump, where the air aeration can go up and down. That's why the, you get a little, little sense of this white stuff right there, those are bubbles, those are things that are going on in the system, giving air to the, to the secondary aeration basins. And it'll allow us to control the speed of those pumps. We're gonna actually reduce our horsepower, because we'll, we'll be able to attain with a reduced horsepower, a better, better dispersion of the, of the oxygen. And that'll give us a better capacity to be able to meet the regulatory issues that we have. And that's getting this nitrogen at a real low level. Whereas right now, we're in a, we're allowed to have a higher nitrogen level just until 2/15, you know, September 2/15. So that's one of the modifications. The other one is, I mean, that's an example. So we're gonna go in and we're gonna, we're gonna put a supercharged engine in it, but still basically have the same car wrapped around it.
Okay.
You know, and, and bring it all up to date with electronic monitoring and everything else, SCADA, supervisory control and data acquisition.
Yeah, I remember you talked about that.
Yep. Here we go, next.
Thank you.
Now the environmental, real quick.
I like the way he said, "real quick."
This is important information, Mark. So in, in order to adopt the facilities master plan and implement all the improvements that Mark just had on the prior slide, SEQA requires that the city evaluate the potentially significant physical environmental impacts of the project. The city hired a scent environmental to help us with this process, and Suzanne Enslo, who was our wonderful project manager, is here tonight, in case you have any technical questions I can handle. To start the environmental process, the city published a notice of preparation. That basically lets everyone know that we're gonna prepare an EIR and requests input into what the appropriate scope and content of that EIR should be. That was published in May of last year. The scoping period was May through the middle of June. And we held a public scoping meeting on June 4th of 2012. That collective information was then used to help prepare the draft EIR, which is the FAT document that we handed out to council. The draft EIR provides a thorough description of the plan, and it evaluates all the environmental impacts associated with the plan. And adopts mitigation measures where feasible to reduce those impacts below a level of significance. Draft EIR was available for public review, provided to council on May 1st of this year for a 45-day public review period, published in the Galt Herald on the city's website, library and all those regular places. Because of a minor glitch in the notice mailing, some agencies didn't receive the notice until May 9th, so we extended their review period to June 25th, so they got the full 45 days. As Mark mentioned, on June 18th, city council held a special, special study session specifically to discuss the draft facilities master plan and the draft EIR. At the close of the draft EIR comment period in late June, we got a total of four comment letters, State Water Resources Control Board, Sacramento Quality District, Caltrans, and then a standard letter that we get from State Clearing House, basically telling us we've complied with the notification of appropriate state agencies. So those comment letters, as well as staff's written responses to the various comments, and one minor edit to the draft EIR text that was recommended by the air district, are what is in the smaller document that's titled the final EIR. By statute, however, the term final EIR actually encompasses both the draft and the final, and what they call the mitigation monitoring reporting program, which we, for convenience sake, just included in the final EIR. So this whole, both documents are actually the final EIR. As outlined in the staff report, council is the lead agency under SEQA. You're responsible for certifying the draft and final EIRs and have been, that they've been completed in accordance with SEQA, and that you have used your independent judgment to review and consider the information prior to approving the facilities master plan. Council must also make findings for each significant environmental effect. You need to explain that either changes were made to the project to avoid or substantially lessen each impact, or that there are overriding considerations that make mitigating the impact as feasible. The proposed resolution of approval in your packets includes staff's recommended findings for each effect, so you don't have to do all that tonight. Next slide, please. Of all the impacts I evaluated in the draft EIR, they were all determined to be a less than significant impact, except for one, and that was the conversion of farmland to non-agricultural use. The facilities master plan will result in the, in additional treatment facilities that will take up to 35 acres. We think that that's pretty exaggerated, but we wanna just make sure we had it covered, that will take that land out of agricultural production. It's still land that the city owns on the 298-acre site that includes the wastewater treatment facility. Because there's no feasible mitigation to prevent the loss of that ag land, city council will need to adopt a statement of overriding considerations, identifying why the benefits of this improvement project outweigh that adverse significant impact. Again, that recommended language is included as exhibit B to your resolution tonight. And the next slide. The facilities master plan is also subject to various federal environmental regulations because of the funding sources. That includes... That includes the National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA, as if it wasn't complicated enough. So to address the NEPA requirements, the scope of this SEQA document was expanded to include what the agencies commonly refer to as SEQA plus. This information will meet the funding requirements and assist the applicable federal agencies in preparing the NEPA documents, which we anticipate will be an environmental assessment and a finding of no significant impact. So with that, I will turn it back to Mark.
The project in itself, what we've identified in the facilities plan, there's some near-term improvements that have to happen. That's to meet our 215 guidelines and, and from the state regulatory people and the improvements to existing facilities, aged facilities that we have. Next one, please. We've done a, back in February of this year, we came to the council to request an amendment to the scope of services for, for West Yost to do the conceptual design documents for the wastewater treatment plant, near-term improvements. And that's this little document here. But this gives us basically about a 10% design. We went back in, we refined some of these numbers and they're pretty close to what we had in the master plan. So as we've been stepping through from the final mass, or from the draft master plan back in February to this conceptual design document that we had just completed in July and what we presented to the council back in June, the numbers have, have pretty much stayed pretty, you know, close to the same. Next. This schedule here, it's, it's kind of hiding a whole lot of work that has to be done, but it also doesn't let you know all the work that has been done. As we know, when we came, when we came before you back in February 2012, it started this project up. We, we did the, started the environmental and the public comment period back in May of 2012. We provided drafts to you in February of the master plan, drafts that you guys have reviewed. In June, we had a special session that went on for about an hour and a half and we presented basically the same information that we have right here in the final documents. And all of this and the consultants, you've got to close yours, this cost us a million dollars to do this. It's a lot of money for consultant, but these, these documents that we have should take us, especially the environmental, should take us a decade or more out in, in, in making sure that we can meet the regulatory ends of. Now, there's a few other things that we're going to have to do in the next, in the next six months, as you see there. We're going to have to come in with a financial plan, we're going to have to, back to you, we're going to have to come in with, to show you what the costs are going to be on the plant, and have to go out to bid, have to come back and get a approval of the bid and then we start this. So there's a lot of other assets, a lot of other facets of this that are going to happen. Finally, I want to say that, that all, there's been so many experts that have looked at this, the state agencies, yeah, they're experts. Leave it at that. And, and multiple county agencies have looked at everything and what we've done in making sure that the environmental documents in the facility master plan just went arm-in-arm with each other, you saw how minimal comments that we had from the state agencies. And I thought, you know, what the consultants have done, what Sandy has done, is pretty effective and it's pretty good documents that we have here. So we're open to questions, that's enough.
Questions, council?
On the, on the convergent vagland, is that, maybe I'm misinterpreting, that's 35 acres through the term of this, is what we're talking about?
Yeah, so maximum of the, we kind of overestimated what we feel it would take.
Okay, okay. Where it was, and I don't recall seeing it site-specific, but it would be, I suspect, in and around the areas where the existing facilities are?
Yeah, there's a diagram in the IR, but, but it's pretty much south and west, I guess, of the existing facilities.
Okay.
Yeah, you're pretty much going to be seeing, what we have in the diagram is around here and on the outside here. This is all ag land that we're currently, that we currently own and that we're irrigating at this time. It's just proper around the treatment plant. This next phase is going to take this whole section right here and that's about it for this, for this phase that we're going to be setting.
I have a question before you move on. In the past, we've had to haul off the sludge. Now, if we take out this 35 acres, will we, will that cause us to have to haul off like we'd have in the past?
Yes, there's, any reduction of, of land is going to impact us in the future. Right now, master plan has determined that we have enough ag land to go to about 4 million gallons a day, which is significantly more than what we have right now. We're at about 2 million gallons a day. So to go to 4, it's almost twice over. And, and so at that time, we would have to be looking for more land or take that incremental sludge somewhere else. So if we take out 35 acres, we have, I won't get into all the numbers, but we have about 173 acres under production right now, agriculture. So 35 acres is significant, it's about 20%. So that would bring that number down if we did that, but as, as the plant grows, you look at the other alternatives of what you can do with that. Can we, can we lease land nearby? Right now, what happened back in phase, in the last phase, this system right here and here was installed and that allowed us to take it from liquid sludge to kind of more of a muddy cake-type sludge. And that's what we put on our system, I mean, on our land right now. We hauled off the liquid before, but that was, that was about a, about a million dollars to put that in, 0.9 million, something like that. And so we're utilizing that and that helps us spread it, you know, on our, on our, I mean, that allows us to spread it on our property at a good cost. It will impact it.
Did we use the Catholic Church property in the past for the sludge?
No, we haven't, no. It was just for effluent, irrigation effluent.
Is that a possibility that we can?
There's a lot of possibilities. We have to, you have to go through the state and get it permitted, and get a site permitted by the state. We have to put in some monitoring wells and go through a whole bunch of process. It's not that difficult because a lot of places take this type of sludge, you know, and so either we would find a place that's already cited for or develop on ourselves, you know. We have some time to do that, you know. To almost double the size of the plant, flow coming in, we got a few years, but we will plan it. And in, and in this document, it talks about when you need to start planning for these things and, and some alternatives with it.
Any more questions?
No additional information on when you think the finding of no significant impact will, it says August, but you, any guess?
Suzanne recently submitted, the EPA basically made us redo our entire EIR into their format for their environmental information documents, so we were staffed to EPA for a while, or Suzanne was staffed. So we have done that now, got it to them, they reviewed it. They've completed, the state historic preservation office has concurred with the finding, we're still waiting for U.S. Fish and Wildlife to concur and then the public review process. So we're hoping August, but it could be early September.
The, the, the document, the EIR, the draft and the final, I mean, the, the, the limited number of comments, I think speaks to the quality of the document and it's very thorough.
Can't say enough for the job that Ascent did on, on this project.
Assist in the findings of, the findings of significance as well?
I did, I did the resume.
Did you?
Very good job. Very thorough. Very thorough. Very good.
I have one more question. It's Kurt.
Yes.
On page 15 in the report, they talk about how we shall pay their quality board offsite mitigation fee for implementation of individual construction phases to the amount of $71,000, including 5% administrative fee. Can you kind of talk about how us paying the money helps the emissions of this project? Helps to mitigate it?
Well, it's, it's only if required, we have to go through the, the calculations when we get to that point, but if, if you do have to pay the offsite mitigation, the air district basically uses that money for various programs they have, like to get gasoline lawnmowers out of production and that sort of thing. So they sort of take that money, put it into other programs that they have that reduce emissions, so that way we're not responsible for having to try and reduce to a particular level of emissions, but they then are kind of responsible for, for doing that.
Actually, I knew that, having served on the board, I thought it was important for people to know how we give money to an agency, how it helps the pollution in the air, so I brought that up.
Anyone else?
One other.
Could you please?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can you please read the action, the recommended action, please?
Adopt a resolution certifying the final environmental impact report prepared for the wastewater treatment plant facilities master plan and immediate improvements project and making, making required findings and adopting a mitigation monitoring and reporting program for said project and adopting the wastewater treatment plant facilities master plan.
Motion?
Can we have some discussion or comment?
Oh, okay.
Just quickly.
We just did.
Well, maybe we did, but it just occurred to me that we're moving along really fast, really, really well, and I want to take a moment to really acknowledge the hard work that has gone into this and the way it was organized by presenting it to us early so we could try to understand it a little better. I guess I just want to say I think you all did a good job. Thank you. Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? You already said, they did a good job, actually you did a good job. You want to say they did a good?
Move to approve.
Okay. Move to approve?
I move to approve.
Okay. Call for the vote, please. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilwoman Campion?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Mayor City Clerk? Designation of a voting delegate?
Yes, the League of California Cities is coming up and holding its annual conference September 18th through September 20th in Sacramento. The annual business meeting will be held on Friday, September 20th at noon, which is after the close of the conference. They are asking for council to appoint a voting representative and up to two alternates for the city's voting delegate and we will notify the league once council makes that decision.
Okay, I, I got a text from Mark today and he's glad to do it. He's sent, a text from Mark on his fifth pit stop on the way to Utah. He said it was going to be a long drive.
Had left California.
Yeah, I hadn't left California yet. And he had asked if he could be the delegate and he's done it years before.
I was going to say, since he's not here, we ought to vote him on anyway, so.
So he is volunteering to do that.
That's fine.
So do we have?
I move for Mark to be the voting delegate.
A second. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilwoman Campion?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Would you like to designate an alternate or would you want to still?
He always goes.
He's going to go, he's going to be there.
Yeah.
Great, we'll notify the league.
We'll, we'll curdle the city all to.
Actually, I may not be, I may not be in town.
I have just a couple reminders, if that's okay.
Okay.
On August 8th tomorrow, the planning commission meeting will be held here in the council chambers at 6:30. On August 14th, the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting will be held at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. The beautification committee meeting for August has been canceled and that brings us to our next city council meeting on August 20th. Thank you. Comments by staff?
Matt wanted to make a comment about a new project.
Jason, Jason actually offered to do it earlier, but I wanted to, I wanted to kind of steal it, steal away from him because I wanted to thank him for all of his support for something we just accomplished and I wanted to thank Steve for his department's support as well, as well as your support for the process. Our fiber optic line is up.
Okay.
No traffic. Now, SCADA traffic across that segment is traveling at 667 times faster than what it was in the past, so that's a huge, huge jump.
That is.
It also revealed some things once we got it up. We had an old T-1 line that was in there and, and-
We don't know what a T-1 line is.
What, yeah, it's just, just copper line.
Okay.
So basically, if, if you'll imagine, you know, one-lane freeway and it's rush hour traffic and everybody trying to get on, we had these bursts of traffic on there and it would just back up, just where you got looky-loos looking at traffic and everything. Now what you've got is you have a 20-lane freeway and we don't have any backups, so our traffic flows very, very fast. So thank you very much for all the support and, and especially in Steve's department, we, we managed complications in the process and, and his guys were, were absolutely on the mark, so thank you very much.
Other than taking down the 911 for the city for 12 hours, we're a real pleased that it's up and running and-
You're welcome.
We hope to make it up to you in faster dispatch speeds now on your, your fancy system you have there. Just one more comment to add is that we are, we were concerned that there might actually be a rash of, you know, workers comp from shock and, and delight at how fast the data was coming through after we got it up for testing last Friday. And we were, there were some tools that are very valuable to us that, you know, Sac County hosts the GIS website for the entire county and cities take advantage of that, but our staff would virtually refuse to use it because it took so long to get logged in, up to half an hour sometimes. And head staff said, well, that's probably the most intensive operation that we do on a routine basis. So I had Bill Forrest and some others go out there and jump on that and they were absolutely astounded that, hey, it's actually usable now. We're up within minutes where it used to take literally half an hour. So thank you again for the assistance in getting that project up and running.
Well, that's great. Any other staff?
I may make one more comment. I don't normally announce vacation, but I've been here with you almost a year and Jason relented to let me take a family vacation. I'm going to miss the next council meeting as a result. We are bringing back two important items and I want you to know we're working closely with staff to get those items prepared for you, but I'll, I'll, I'll leave it in Mark's and Rich Preym's capable hands to take the next giant steps along the path for water metering and actually the design contract that will dovetail with the action you took tonight.
Did you mention the groundbreaking for Twin Cities?
The Twin Cities Groundbreaking will be held next Friday, August, somebody, 16th?
16th?
16th at 11:00 AM, out on Twin Cities and Frontage, I believe on the, I don't really have it, the north, the west side of 99?
Northwest.
Just the west. I didn't mean to say north.
Northwest?
Well, the west side. We haven't decided if it's on the north side of Twin Cities or the south side.
Oh, okay.
Look for the blue.
Softcom or in the vacant lot?
Yeah, Softcom or the vacant lot. So that's, I think what we're looking at. We're actually having a meeting tomorrow. We hope to get it in the Galt Herald next week, so look for it in the newspaper, we'll be sending out emails, have it on the website after tomorrow morning. But it will be held at 11 and look for the crowd. Okay. 11 on August 16th. Staff, anything, anything else? Okay, council, we'll start with Barbara.
Shop Local Committee, which is made up, sponsored by the city as well as the Chamber of Commerce, has started this new campaign recognizing some of the oldest businesses that have stayed with Galt through good times and bad times. So I'm requesting that the city council allow us to put together a proclamation recognizing Robinson's Feed as the first business to be recognized for hanging in there with us.
That's a great idea.
Well, good. Glad you like.
I do.
So I just need a consensus that it's okay to put together a proclamation honoring them.
Works for me.
Okay, okay. That's one item. Next item, I have three. I just wanted to say that I attended the swearing-in of our new fire officers in, or fire, you know, fire officers in Elk Grove. They, yeah, I guess they, they pinned, yeah, that's the right terminology, they pinned nine new officers and one, I was happy to say, was from Galt. So that was great. And finally, in, let's see, September 29th through October 1st, I'm going to be attending a Leadership for Healthy Communities Childhood Obesity Prevention in Baltimore, Maryland, and I have a scholarship to attend that. And there's another scholarship available if any of the council members have an interest in- in the subject. So if you have an interest, talk to Liz. She has all the information about it. And that's it.
Council member, Vice Mayor Singleton?
All I've got is the National Night Out last night. What a great turnout. We had a lot of good people. Chief did a great job organizing the officers at first, and then we kind of lost a little places in line, but it was a great event. I want to thank the citizens. We had a lot of good citizens show up, not that we had bad citizens show up. But it was nice to see the, the amount of people that came to each park at Meadowview, Community Park, and then, uh, the family, yeah, family church. So it was a great event. I had a good time talking to everybody. How's that?
I just want to, oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Campion?
I was just going to say something about the National Night Out. It was a lot of fun. First time, obviously, I've been to all the, made the rounds as council members and was impressed with the turnout and the amount of participation. It was great.
And I'm, I'm very pleased to say and very happy to say that the whole city council went, and we had a city manager, we had Liz, and quite a few police officers.
Yeah, well, a lot of cadets, how many cadets?
And a lot of cadets, and it was just a great showing of the city, and it was really a very nice evening.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting.